Okay, we're, uh, need a motion to go back into, uh...
Motion to go back into open session.
Part. motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Hader, go back into open session for the special meeting. Clerk, um, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Here. Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader? Mayor Clark?
Yes. Coming out of our work session, is there, uh, Councilwoman Stilgrave?
Oh, yes, I'd like to... Make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement to purchase 619 South Telegraph for eighty thousand dollars and approve the city manager and city attorney to sign.
Second, motion by Councilwoman Stilgrave, supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, uh, for the actions stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Uh, I think there's any further action, uh, any...
No, no more action here from the administration.
This adjournment, correct? Motion to adjourn special meeting.
Part.
Motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Stilgrave to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I need one minute.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, six forty-eight, we'll call the city council work session, or work session meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stilgrave?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germani?
Here.
Lemoore?
Present.
Felder?
You.
Hader?
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Present. Uh, next item is public comment, um, any comments from the public that's present here this evening? Seeing none, uh, clerk, the next item is...
The, um, work session agenda is the rescue boat presentation.
City Manager Robinson.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, I'd like to, um, Public Safety Director, uh, Tolsted, to the, the podium to talk, uh, about, uh, rescue boat they are considering for procurement.
Thank you. Director?
Good evening, Council, Alma Mayor, City Council, Clerk Lavoy, Chad Tolsted, Director of Public Safety. Um, I was told I could not plug in my own computer, uh, because we didn't want to mess anything up with the state of the city address here today, so... There it is. Okay. So, the rescue boat, so how we arrived here, to give you a little bit of background, how we arrived here with the rescue boat, was since taking over as director, I've had offline conversations with my commanders, uh, how we've taken a look at some of the things that we'd like to enhance our abilities to, uh, on the, on the, out on the waters, that we thought the, the boat we have is fine, but we thought a better boat, but the cost of a boat is really prohibitive of doing something like that. We had other priorities that we wanted to meet ahead of time. So, here comes, uh, the Director of Port of Monroe, Paul Lamar, and we started talking about, he received a grant for a port readiness slip, and said, brought me over and said, hey, we will fund this port readiness slip, you guys tell us what you need, and we will fund it and we will build it how you want to. Uh, spoke with the sheriff's office, they said they would be willing to bring in a boat as well, they have safer boats as well, we have jet skis as well. Uh, the issue we have with the current boat is it doesn't have a bilge pump, and to leave something like that outside could fill with water and sink. But we also wanted to enhance our capabilities, also talking with the EMD, the Emergency Management Divisions, we made, uh, talk with them about, hey, is there anything out there for grant-wise that we could procure a boat with? And there was nothing at the time, some time goes by, EMD contacts me, says, I have two gentlemen, uh, one from Homeland Security, one from the Coast Guard, that would like to have a meeting with you reference a rescue boat. Are you interested? I said, yes. So we got some of my staff together, uh, met, went, met up with them, and this is the information they shared with us, was that the Coast Guard's resources are reduced from what they once were, and they're looking for local partners such as City of Monroe to bring on some of these boats and such like that to support their efforts in this. I'm like, and so they, they said, yes, you could openly talk about this, we're not hiding this fact that we, we're, we have depleted resources, we want local partnerships. So, we, they, they recommended a grant writer, uh, reached back out to some of the resources which we had, which was, uh, Paul Lamar, we talked to some of our in-house, uh, people as well, say, where could we get this grant writer? And where we come from, we started back with Paul Lamar. So we thought, spoke with Director Lamar concerning, hey, who did you use for a grant writer? Um, and he made some recommendations for us, but I'd like to invite Paul up here to just to kind of address some of this, what this port readiness slip is, and give you a little bit of background on it.
Thank you, everyone, it's good to see you all tonight. As the chief said, the port had applied in our Port Infrastructure Development Program grant, uh, to create a port readiness slip. Readiness being the auxiliary vessels of the port and those with our first responders that could potentially locate at the port and be closer to any of the activity on the River Raisin. It's actually somewhere where we're lacking fairly significantly right now, and even on the lake, Breast Bay, et cetera, just outside, um, uh, just outside the mouth of the river, uh, there have been any number of emergencies that if we could have gotten to quicker, uh, we could have prevented tragedy. And, um, I live out on Stony Point Peninsula, and we've had a couple of instances out there where the timeliness of response costs somebody their lives. And ultimately, having this resource, uh, as the port becomes more busy, as we open our container terminal, and to be able to add value to public dollars that are already being spent. Uh, we're of course building our container terminal, which is going to lead to more freight, but ultimately, the infrastructure grant that we received from USDOT, and, uh, ultimately, um, is being matched by the state of Michigan, um, that provides for this slip where we can tailor-build it to accommodate the vessel that will be most useful, uh, for the chief and his team. One of the things that will come up, and I'll, I'll just touch on it, do you want me to touch on the match, matching fun now?
Oh, we, we can, we, we had that set up, but if you want to touch on...
No, we can, we can wait for, we're set up. Um, this really is a good thing where we're capitalizing on public dollars that are already being spent, and, uh, ultimately, the opportunity is, the chief mentioned, we're very close with Marine Safety Unit Toledo, the captain of the port for the Port of Detroit, but also the admiral, uh, and chief of prevention for District Nine Coast Guard for the entire Great Lakes. They have said that if there is a time for a municipality to apply for a boat through this program, it is it because they are lacking the number of appropriate vessels within the domain to adequately cover, uh, the waterfront. So, I'll be back in a moment.
Thank you, Paul. So, why a rescue boat? It enhances our, some of the things touched on by myself already and Paul was, it will enhance our ability to, for rescue operations, enhance our ability to respond to water vessels out on the lake, uh, in the mouth there near the port as well, to perform operations, uh, provide a stronger law enforcement presence. And it's worth noting that the advantage that we have of being a public safety department was of peak interest to both Homeland Security and the Coast Guard, when I explained our operations, that we have cross-trained police as firefighters, but that we operate as one department, not as separate departments. So a vessel such as this wouldn't operate strictly as a fire vessel, meaning like, well, this is our fire vessel, now we need a police vessel, no, this would be a joint operation vessel to perform both police and fire functions. So why now? Again, the limited resources from the, uh, Coast Guard themselves, uh, increased operations of the port itself, and the grant opportunity which we touched on. So I didn't provide, I don't have a ton of detail spend specifics of the boat, but it has firefighter capabilities. Uh, if you want, I brought Commander Smiley here with us tonight, he can talk to you about how much more water a vessel like this would actually pump out of fire compared to what an engine would. But it has sea burn capability as well, sea burn is chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear. Uh, it has the ability to, depending on how we build it and price it, to seal in that cabin to be able to go into haz, hazmat-type areas to perform rescue operations as well. Visible patrols are always the first line of anything within, uh, within law enforcement type standards is visible patrols, which is always helpful on any event we may have. And this also complements and supports the partnerships we have within the community. I mentioned the sheriff's office as well, he's been a great partner with these kind of things, when we talk to him about, hey, this is what we're thinking, this is how we think we can complement services, and he's been a great partner for us. So the grant application process, so how the process works is we would need to hire a grant writer. So specifically, in the, some of the information you received was Tiffany Torres, the grant writer. How, how I came to know that name Tiffany Torres is through Paul Lamar, who, he'll get up and explain some of the background he has with Tiffany Torres, was able to procure some of the grants that we each received today. Uh, I can tell you, I've talked to her a few, a couple times, and she's very responsive. In addition, that the maritime grant writer is a specific type thing, uh, it's not something that you can just, uh, would look into, uh, any grant writer, but it's a very specific type skill, and she has been successful in the past in getting those passed. So the grant writer would be the initial step, so the whole thing starts with grant writer, and then we don't really do anything else until approval, approval time, but the preparation to get ready for that grant requires support from congressmen, senators, uh, all of which are very well-connected, Paul Lamar says he has access to. So then it would go to the grant manager, which would also be Tiffany Torres, and then into the project manager, which we would handle in-house. That would be the procurement of the boat, uh, Tiffany Torres would be there to make sure we, we don't violate any of the agreements which we have for the grant as well. So what does a boat like this cost? About a million dollars is where we're currently at with that. So if approved, our match for the city would be twenty-five percent. So we're roughly in the area of like two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Match for equipment would be our twenty-five percent, match for the project manager time, twenty-five percent. I know when we talk about a million dollars, fifteen hundred isn't that much, but we might get back fifteen hundred dollars as a grant writer as well. So Paul will be back up here now, and Paul's going to tell us how, uh, we have some opportunities, possibly not as it, we wouldn't, to be able to achieve some of that twenty-five percent match from the state itself.
First of all, to speak to Tori Enterprises, the grant writing company that the Port of Monroe has worked with, uh, they're actually out of New York because there are very few, as the chief said, maritime grant writers. And in this case, this grant writing firm and this individual have an outstanding relationship with both the US Department of Transportation, the US Coast Guard, and the Maritime Administration. Those relationships are a huge part of understanding the grant, the process, and when writing the grant, uh, we just worked with another agency on a grant, and, um, though it was a really great grant writing company, they were very trendy and, uh, great presentation, they never became intimately familiar with the purpose of the grant. Uh, because this individual is very maritime-focused, it makes sense and will lead to a high rate of success. This same grant program, the port, uh, utilizing their services, uh, received a one point two million dollar grant to, uh, acquire the radiation portal monitor for our customs facility, uh, just three years ago. So it's the very same program that will be applied to, the twenty-five percent match and how we come up with that. I'm fortunate to chair the Governor's Port Advisory Committee, which is the Maritime Advisory Committee for the state. And through that, and work with our local and regional legislators, we were able to get legislation passed last year to create the first maritime office within MDOT, but also a five million dollar a year port grant program, uh, specifically for port infrastructure or items such as this. And the key element of that program, which is just about to get started, is to match federal grant funds that are being, uh, potentially awarded to the state. In small towns like ours, small ports like ours, the local match often precludes small communities from applying. It becomes too heavy of a lift, and Michigan is looking at different opportunities, how we can make smaller communities competitive for these federal funds that are being put out there. So the first line would be the port infrastructure grant program through the state, which we are very closely connected to. The second would be the opportunity grant program that's being set up by the state, and that's being set up specifically to match federal grant funds across a whole host, uh, of different areas. There's very good potential with this, not only from our current support from the Coast Guard, but also having the support of Senator Peters and his position of the Chairman of the Senate Homeland Security Committee. It puts us at a very high likelihood... It puts us at a very high likelihood for funding, but I also, uh, firmly believe that the local match component of this, uh, will not be an issue. And I, I just want to add one thing. If you have jet skis at the port readiness slip, I would like the chief to wear a Baywatch outfit.
I don't know if that's going to happen. So some additional, so Dave, some additional considerations for council that we, you know, wanted to look in to give you a full picture. Again, we don't know what this thing might look like in the end. But Commander Smiley talked to Toledo Fire, who actually at one time brought up the boat and showed us what they had, which is to be something similar that we would, we would seek. They, we reached out to them. What do you guys pay manual maintenance? It's about $15,000, $800 maintenance. We'd have to winterize it, dry dock. It's a diesel engine, which we could have our city mechanics also work on. The licensing requirement for it would be, it's actually quite minimal. Commander Smiley again looked into the licensing requirement on that one. It would be a recreational. Uh, we did, uh, speak to, like, so we have a current boat now. Say, well, is this all we have for our operators is basic licenses? No, we send them to enhanced training. To operate the boat, we would be able to operate the boat at a, at a certain level license, but we want our operators to be, have enhanced training, which we would send them to, and not just limit it to, uh, fire services, but police as well, to complement one another. Similar to how we do with our drone program, when we need the drone, we don't just call out police or fire for different operations. We call them out for unilaterally for any operation, so to support the city at a high level. And again, I would also like emphasize, there's no additional personnel in which we're looking for, for this boat as well. Like I said, well, we need to staff this boat 24 hours a day. We're not looking for that. We would operate this boat in the same manner which we operate our boat now. Is it, but it deploys quicker because it's already in the water and there at the port. So to kind of wrap things up, it's a unique opportunity, I think, I think you guys heard here tonight, for us to seek an opportunity such as this, where it enhances our ability for safety and security for the port. And anytime bringing projects like this before council, uh, it always, does it match up with what we want to do for our city? Does it match up with our why, which is the safety and the security of our citizens, to enhance our ability to respond in case of emergency? And this fits within that program. And that is, that is it. Anybody open for questions?
I'll see if there's questions from council members. Councilmember Lamar?
Thank you. Probably more question for Director Lamar, but, uh, is there any cost for the slip, to enhance the slip to, or do we have a slip available?
The slip, uh, where the readiness slip is being built is already, it's already a funded project. So it's the slip outside the port, us, office headquarters that will be completely refurbished with sheet hiring. And we have integrated within the budget the ability to put in a lift and the other implements that they need. So it's already fully funded to build the slip.
And next question would be, how would this affect mutual aid? You know, because we, we already respond for Monroe Township and Frenchtown Township and several other townships. Uh, is this something that we're going to continue to do with this boat as well? Because a lot of our area out in the lake is in Frenchtown or Monroe Township, not necessarily in the city proper.
We would continue with the mutual aid agreements we have in place for rescue operations. I, I, this obviously puts us in a different position. Uh, the only other boats like this are one in Toledo and one in Detroit. So we're kind of in the middle. This would increase our operations in that regard because of the responsiveness. So we looked up, in the last two years, we responded 29 times in 20, between 22 and 22 and 2023, 29 times out on the lake. But we would continue with the same agreements that we have currently.
Okay, and the last question I have, if you don't mind, uh, just, I'm assuming it's going to be called upon the same way our emergency vehicles are, 911, et cetera, correct?
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, as far as it being called out, it's going to be called out similar to 911 or however, we currently call out for a police vehicle.
Correct. It would be, you know, called in through dispatch if there was a need for it.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the readiness of this is, you know, instead of having to take our boat currently from the station and then having deployed out, this is already put into the water there. It'll, I think, cut our response time in probably half, if not more, depend, you know, depending on when we get out there and get in the water.
I agree. And I know that we have some new equipment coming to the police department as well. The new cameras coming, how are those going to potentially fit into, uh, or on this boat?
There was no thought I had initially of putting a, uh, like a, like a fleet camera onto the boat itself, but any police officers that would launch on the boat probably would not wear a body worn camera because they're not waterproof, they're not submersible in water. Uh, but it's something we could certainly look at and ax, ax on. Is anybody else, are you putting, uh, cameras, ax on cameras on their boats? It would be, I think, a unique idea for them.
Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you. So will this boat also be used for any kind of drug cartel or anything like that on the water? Or is it strictly for rescue purposes?
No, this, this grant itself has a, um, uh, safe, a security nexus to it. Uh, that was some of the things they talked to us about is they, and they, they like the fact that they know that with law enforcement, we'd be using it as well for any type of human trafficking that may occur, anything that might come in off the water. This vessel would be used for either, any purpose that we see fit for safety.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman, uh, Biden?
With, with your old boat that you have to transport now, we have a space in the slip for, for the boat you currently have? I'm coughing at the old boat, but we haven't even got the new boat yet. But you know, the boat you currently have?
Yeah, we.
Would that be stored on, in the, in this new slip as well?
Looked into actually moving it out there now. Mr. Lamar was very magnanimous and said, hey, you can bring the boat out now. It doesn't, it didn't have, it didn't fit, be able to keep it outside. It didn't have a bilge pump, meaning it could fill up with water. But that would be something I would want to look at, is, hey, is this boat, can this boat fit out there as well? I believe there would be room enough for it, uh, but we'd have to take considerations in for it, uh, to make sure that it was safe and secure. It might, might require a lift, but we hadn't really gotten as far as what do we do with our, what do we do with the old boat, so to speak, uh, now if we were to get this new one?
So it doesn't have the same capabilities of what this one would? Because obviously, it's not by the cost, it's by the function which it's built to do.
Correct. We'd, we'd have.
The current, um, watercraft doesn't have the same capabilities that this would. Agreed?
Correct. There are two different type of vessels. We'd have to look at, look in comparison. Does the, uh, the current boat we have, does it, can we use that for a different function as opposed to the, the newer boat we propose to get? Do, do they complement one another? Is it most beneficial for us to keep them, keep them both? Uh, many different options, I think, on the table that what we would want to do.
So I'll see if there's a question, but just, I'll say real quick. So I think about, you said earlier about the, you know, security and what it'd be, probably be a policy set, what, you know, kind of criteria that, uh, the boat will be utilized for, and very much the same thing, what the one that we currently have is utilized for. And it may not be the same mission, but it may be, uh, by the location as well as the type, right? Councilman Lamar?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not sure if we know this yet or not, but do you know what the draft of the boat would be?
I do not. I looked back to Fire Commander Smiley.
The max is like five feet. It, it, the slip is going to be full draft of the channel, 21 feet. So we'll, we'll be able to accommodate it.
How far upriver could you go with something?
Oh, uh, something.
That type of draft?
You could go, uh, pretty far, actually. I mean, you could get it past, you know, of course, the Clantigger and, and all those areas. You could get up until you have the first fish ladder or rocks, uh, close to downtown.
So Hellenberg Park, which is where the Winchester Bridge is, and the first, um, lowhead dam that's still there, that is now has the rocks, uh, set to it.
Well, it's something we don't have access to right now. I mean, really, in, in immediate access.
It's not an icebreaker.
They're watching music playing now.
Other questions or thoughts? So, um, I guess I think this through and, and, you know, the, it is an item that's on the agenda, and I guess my thought is if council has input, uh, about, uh, moving forward, now would be a time to give the direction to the manager to, you know, continue to, uh, progress through this evening, uh, with the item that's on the agenda regarding, uh, hiring the grant, uh, writer. I, I was going to ask this question. Is there a timeline or urgency to the, the grant submission? Is there a date for that? That's something I did, got to ask about.
It opens fairly soon. Uh, I think within the next, I, please don't quote, but I think within the next couple of weeks it does open, and then it, then it closes. We would find out if we're awarded sometime in September, I think, is the return, and find out if we're rewarded. So the, it opens soon, and then I think there's about a four to six week period in which we can, we can submit. What I received back from the grant writer and from the Homeland Security is, you get started on it sooner than later because it's cumbersome.
So if it's opening up in a couple of weeks, that's the submission for a grant, correct?
Correct.
And then there's probably a, a window closing of when they have to be submitted by. We don't know that. But then the September date is when they make the, uh, awards, but that's not when the funding comes. It's a timeframe before that occurs. How long?
Between when we were awarded and when the funding comes in.
Awarded in September. What's the timeframe? I know I look at apparatus when we buy, that's a year plus out, this type of thing. I'm just curious, that's all.
I, I believe it was, if I believe that when we spoke with the Homeland Security, they was about from, about time of award till you get a vessel, it's, it's, you were looking at at least a year.
So that goes, the follow-up comment I would have is that's the case. And if we're, obviously, uh, the, the match is significant. And if there's funding available, that's, uh, uh, would be, uh, welcoming. I don't know how we do it otherwise, quite honestly. But if it is, what's the timeline on those submissions? And when are they usually allocating those? Because there's, everybody has different calendars. And you can get there and then find out we can't get the match for another six months. That's a problem. Uh, on the other hand, if it can be moved forward simultaneously, then I, then we're trying to, you know, I'll just say, get in the slip at the same time.
Yeah. Do you know when that opens up?
So the, the program is being developed as we speak, uh, the port program. My thought would be, uh, to essentially, uh, prepare to brief the appropriate people on the submission, once the grant goes in, and once it's in, um, or once an announcement would be made, then secure the grant funding, say, September. I think the notice of funding comes out February 25th. I think it's, I think it's a 90-day submission, uh, after February 25th. But this will be something that will be timely. And of course, the port will be happy to assist, uh, in trying to gather support from our legislators, et cetera, and some of our port stakeholders to ensure that it goes in with as much, um, uh, support as possible.
How often do these come out for posting for?
Annually.
Annually. So it's a annual submission, okay. Councilman Lamar?
Yeah, one other question. I know you mentioned something about winterization. Is that something that has, has to come out of the water, or is it stay in?
I would say that it would have to come out of the water, uh, and it would be up to, I'm sure the boat will come with a trailer, and it can absolutely be stored at the port on the trailer or wherever the chief deems appropriate. And also, you know, if the waterway is open and not iced over, it could hang in the sling, uh, and, and be ready for deployment. But we're going to specify that, that lift or that hoist specifically with the boat that they end up specking in the grant.
Very good. That's added improvement, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman?
Thank you. So do we need to build a pole barn to store it inside?
Fortunately, I would expect with the inter-agency, um, coordination that it exists with stakeholders on the water, that, uh, we would be more than able to put the vessel in the new multimillion-dollar customs facility, um, uh, when we're not operating during the shipping season.
Thank you.
Other comments from council? I mean, it, as I said, it is on, on the, uh, item for the council's review here later this evening. And if there, I guess if there's, uh, concerns or comments, would now be time to at least try to look into those or answer them before we get into the session. I mean, obviously, this is a work session, so we don't, we don't make decisions here, but it's always, uh, opportunity to, uh, provide input to, to give the manager direction as we get into the meeting as well, so. But if there's no other comments.
There's not really a downside on this one. It's, it's pure positive, especially with the funding that's being put in place.
What's being asked, of course, is, you know, to fund a, a grant writer to, for the submission, and then that starts the process. To me, it's about the timing, and if it can, uh, all marry up, uh, and, and works, and then we, with all problems, but we have to anticipate for, uh, challenges as well. And you don't want to receive something and not have the match and have to give it back because that doesn't usually bode well next time you want to submit. Uh, but I guess going into that, knowing if we can manage that before it gets to that point, if we know it's not going to be managed, then I think we have to do some form of a retraction before we have to say no. And you know that, um, I guess we'll see. And the, the cost is, uh, obviously within the manager's discretion, but it's coming forward as far as to this presentation, uh, so kind of an understanding. That's why I think that it's on the agenda for a discussion. Both the timeline, it's not, you know, it's not that, uh, another meeting wouldn't deter that because we're still in February, but I guess if there's questions or further than any council member needs from the manager, from the director, or, uh, Lamar, or the public safety director, I guess, now's the opportunity. If not, we'll kind of adjourn and move forward into the meeting. Okay. Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members appreciate your time on this.
Thanks. Anything further?
Further items for the work session?
How much are questions on the agenda? We have probably a couple of minutes or so, five minutes, if there's a particular item that you might want clarification on before we start. If not, seeing none, we'll adjourn. We have about 12 minutes before the next meeting. So at this time, we'll adjourn the work session. Thank you. We call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Steelgrave?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germany?
Here.
Lamore?
Present.
Felder?
Your.
Hader?
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Present.
And I'll ask, will you please rise for the invocation? Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Thank you. City Manager Robinson, any adjustments to the agenda?
I have no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
Councilmembers, if there's any thoughts. Seeing none, a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Hader to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $1,171,029.31.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda council wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Put at the end of the meeting, and we'd, uh, have the opportunity for a person that wishes to have it pulled to come up and speak to it. If not, the items on the consent agenda get approved collectively. Seeing no items on the consent agenda to be pulled? Uh, Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like all items on the consent agenda to be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
There's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 4478, State of the City Presentation.
Uh, City Manager Robinson.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel, Honorable Mayor. I'm honored here today, stand before you and our citizens, to address the current state of this city. As we come together, it's crucial to reflect on our achievements, our, and acknowledge our challenges, and outline the path forward. Our city is vibrant and a diverse community, and the administration is committed to working collaboratively, collaboratively, to ensure the continued growth and prosperity. In the next few minutes, I'm going to provide an overview of the city's financial condition, key accomplishments, initiatives, and continued plans that have shaped the trajectory of our community based on the previous term's goals and objectives as set by City Council. From infrastructure improvements to community engagement, economic development, and beyond, we have much to look forward to as the City Council prepares to guide us with new goals and objectives for this term. Thank you for your dedication to the city, and let us embark on this journey together to ensure a bright and successful future. All of you were provided this, this presentation ahead of time, and, and upon conclusion of this presentation tomorrow, this will be me, be made available to the public, uh, on the city website, under the City Manager page. So people will have this information. There's a lot of information in here, and I know, um, I might get a couple eggs thrown at me and tomatoes if I sat and read everything that's on, on these slides, so I'm going to hit the highlights, and, and then obviously, you have the material in front of you, and the public will have that material, uh, beginning tomorrow. Um, in the first slide, you'll see it's the 2223 general fund budget. Now, that ended June 30th of 2023, and we are now in fiscal year 2324. And I included this shot, this slide, because, um, just to show that we, uh, we, we did have a good budget year, and you had received all this information as we received the report from the auditors, uh, I think it was a month or so ago, and, and we did well in our audit, and I think a lot of credit goes to our city and goes to our Finance Director and his The big highlights from that year is we had a $260,000 surplus, and out of that $260,000, we had $80,000 to be spent on encumbered items and another 86 to spend that we used for spending early retirement incentives, primarily in police and fire. Um, and it's always important to point out that the general fund budget, we still remained over the, the 15% policy for the unassigned fund balance, which is, which is very important, uh, hence rainy day fund, et cetera. The 2324 budget, what I'll show you is that, uh, as you look ahead, the very most important column is that very third one where it says budget variance is zero. Since inception of this budget, we have had an increase in revenues, and we have had an increase in our expenditures. But all in all, we have a budget variance of zero. So the key term is the budget remains balanced, which is important. The revenue, the budget overall increased $179,000, and primarily, the reason the revenue increased was because of investment income and percity property, personal property tax revenue that, that assisted us in, in having higher revenues. Um, and the personal prop, the, the property tax revenue was overestimated slightly. Expenditures, the budget overall increased expenditures by also 100 and about $80,000. Uh, the small increase, we've, we've seen a small increase in personnel costs, staffing changes in overtime, and we've seen small increase in non-personnel costs, which legal fees and street lighting. The important page, what we have to look forward to in our future, and what we are concerned with. The future budget risk and concerns, looking out three to five years. Obviously, the big elephant in the room is always concerns about our talks, our top taxpayers taxable value. And that's DTE with the uncertainty it's been in the press, it's been in the thing as, as they work towards becoming carbon neutral over the next 15, 20 years. We have to be conserved and conservative, and we have to be prepared for any kind of, uh, valuation change in, in the tax revenue that we receive from DTE. The, the next most important step in that process is we have to plan for a consultant for the current agreement that we have with DTE, with their tax revenue will expire in the 2526 fiscal year, and by the end of the 26, depending on the status of their decommissioning and, and what their plans may have changed, we, and depends what their plan is moving forward, we will most likely have to prepare for another, uh, negotiations with, with the taxes with, with them. Um, another risk and concern is we have to maintain adequate qualified personnel at an affordable cost. I think we can all agree that we've seen the high cost of the labor market has affected everybody, and we have set ourselves on a position and a trajectory over the last 10 to 15 years at least, that we hire quality people and we pay a quality wage. And the whole intention is we don't want to have, uh, recycling employees, because it costs money when you lose people, and, but we have to be able to afford it. And that, that is something that we have to keep in mind when we're, when we're looking at the budgeting, and we have to keep in mind as we move forward and, and setting fee schedule, or salaries, et cetera. Pension funding, another thing we have to be concerned about. The, we've seen an increase this year that we're going to have to contribute to our pension fund, that our obligation has increased. The, the reason for that is the, the pension investment and the market's mediocre performance, and that is something that is 100% out of our control and is unpredictable, but we always have to prepare for it, because we've promised our employees, we've promised, uh, our retirees, that we're always going to fund that to the, to the, uh, great fund balances that we have now that gives everybody security in their retirement, as well as their health care. Keeping the budget sustainable for the future, we have to remember when we do our budgeting and thinking we have to be conservative, because our capacity to add fixed overhead is limited, and we have to closely monitor that. Because as we move forward, we don't want to get ourselves into fixed costs that should we see a... we see a decrease in the taxable values and our tax revenues coming in. We do not want to be in a position where we have to start affecting the human element and look at having to lay off or anything like that. So we always have to, as we plan, we have to be conservative with that and always be thinking worst case scenario so that we're prepared and not surprised. The capital funding, as always, and those of you who've been here a while, have sat through the capital improvement program and the funding stuff before, always, there's more requested than is fundable every year. And what we have to remember, again, just like being conservative about our overhead, we also have to be conservative about our large projects. We have to make sure that we're not, that the capacity, we have to remember when we're doing our budgeting, that the capacity for funding for these large projects has to be closely monitored, and we have to be conservative. We must continue the infrastructure improvements prior to the potential taxable value adjustments. I think as I look back and, you know, being, I've only been here a quarter of the time that those goals and objectives were set out before, but as I look back, we have been doing the right things from a financial standpoint, thanks to your guidance and thanks to the fine work of our finance director and our staff and directors, that we have really been smart about the infrastructure and the procurements for high dollar things to be able to properly do our job and continue to do our job should that funding cease and we would be sustainable for the next 20 years. This is why that we have committed to a five-year budget planning cycle, because we have to look at these things and we have to be prepared. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the goals and objectives that many of you were part of putting in place in '22. Obviously, each term, the council will set the goals and objectives, and they do such working with the administration to come up with reasonable goals and expectations. And I think sometimes it's really important to point out what those goals were and how we did as an administration and working with you and working with the public, how we met those goals. The first goal I'll talk about is all under Goal A, and it was entitled Economic and Community Development. The goal was develop a housing master strategy and encourage infill development, assess senior housing demand, encourage remodeling and restoration of existing housing stock, encourage homeownership, improve quality and livability of rental housing, and aggressively address blight problems and preserve the historic character of the older neighborhoods. Very detailed and very lofty goal, and I think that we've done a good job reaching that. I think the residential strategy that we have, when it comes to housing, will be completed by the end of next month, March of '24. We've seen a large increase in our blight enforcement, which includes our court actions to maintain the areas of our city and maintain those buildings and structures that have to be maintained and within our blight ordinance. We've seen a 50% increase in our rental inspections and our demolition of unsafe structures. I think that that has been very meaningful. And the Huber Drive and Holiday Drive was completed in fall 2023 at the Lazy Boy Redevelopment Site, allowing for a housing development along Huber that has already commenced with completing, the completion expected the summer of 2024. Again, under the same goal of economic development, engage the Citizens Planning Commission on developing two subarea plans annually focusing on residential infill opportunities and redevelopment. Well, I'm happy to say that the Orchard East Master Plan was completed. I think the other subarea plans that we have in store are going to actually be included in the residential strategy to include the priority redevelopment sites. This was a lot of work that went in progress that has led to this residential strategy, and I think it's taken many work sessions with you and many efforts by my staff and the Economic and Development Office in order to come up with a solid residential strategy that should be completed here at the end of March. Another one of the goals was to update the city sign ordinance and to include murals and special conditions. The sign ordinance was completely overhauled and updated. Communications plan for rollout and public awareness is in process. We were asked in those goals to continue to support revitalization of downtown. The city supported the DDA's purchase of the Monroe Optical Building and provided funding assistance for the eligible brownfield activities. We currently, under staff review, is the traffic analysis with the potential conversion of front and first to two-way and options for parking and non-motorized travel on Monroe Street that is within-house now. We have the results, and it's at the staff level review with an implementation planned for 2025. We're asked to continue to evaluate the funding and facility operation of the River Rays and National Battlefield. We signed a new lease with the National Park Service, was executed in December of last year. The exterior improvements, including the parking lot replacement and the education center master plan, is underway with construction planned in 2024. Participate with the Michigan Department of Transportation in planning and evaluating alternative associated with the I-75 reconstruction as it pertains to the interchange improvements. This administration was an active partner and convening facilitator with MDOT on the completion of their PEL process, which is the Planning and Environment Linkages, which is basically their feasibility study, and then that feasibility study makes a recommendations or a group of recommendations to MDOT on what the path forward is. After reviewing these, this administration has been building a cohesive consortium between public and private partner stakeholders and our legislative leaders in anticipated discussions with MDOT regarding the community's preferred alternative, all of the alternatives that were presented. That's very important because we're working very hard of getting all of our ducks in a row to make sure that our community is represented, the corporations and businesses that are within that area that will be affected by that, as well as our community members who use that as a travel source day in and day out. We want to make sure you're accurately represented when those discussions happen with MDOT. The construction for that project is targeted for '29 and 2030. Goal B, very important, it's to ensure that, and we talked about it briefly earlier, that in 2035, all city infrastructure would be in good condition and sustainable for another 20 years. Obviously, as different things have happened with our top taxpayer, and their timelines have decreased, so have ours. And as that time comes sooner, we're getting prepared sooner. In that specific goal, there was Parks and Trails Project. Very important thing, we established the Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee. All of our neighborhood park playscapes have been replaced except for one. The Trail Master Plan was adopted and implemented, which was supported by our voters with the Capital Improvements Roads and Trails Millage Approval. The Sidewalk Replacement Plan continues on, and in 2024, we plan on, the project that's going to be big this year is going to be the continuation of sidewalk along Monroe Street near the S Streets as we go between the cemetery towards Stewart Road, where there's a significant gap in sidewalks there. And as you are all well-known, the comprehensive rehabilitation of the MLK Bridge, which is commencing in spring of 2024. Road projects. There's a lot of things that go into road projects and water projects, and we hear them all, and we see the things that come across our agendas in the various weeks, but to really realize how comprehensive and how expensive these things are, I think that we have done an amazing job of meeting the goals that we need to meet so that we can update all of our infrastructure. Last year, we spent $2.5 million on local road funds, state and local road funds reconstructing city streets last year. It's more than 2.5 miles. And understand when we're reconstructing these streets, we are looking for long-term lifespans. That means instead of just milling and asphalting over these streets, we are going to the concrete reconstructions that have a 30- and 40-year lifespan. We spent nearly $6.5 million of federal ARP of monies constructing new roads, storm sewers, and pump station to serve the north end of the St. Mary's Gardens subdivision. I thank the residents during that construction portion because it took a long time, it was a hard project, and it's something that we appreciate the patience as you're working with contractor schedules, and I think we tried to be as less intrusive for the residents that live there as we possibly could, but it was important we have the success of that project. And it must be noted that all of the road projects in 2024 will include storm leads to each home to provide clear water outlet to reduce inflow and infiltration. Water sewer projects, I know that all of you know, but our public may not know, is our water and sewer projects are normally always funded out of the enterprise, it's in enterprise funds that are user-based, fees-based, and that we do not spend general fund money to fund these operations. The water and sewer projects, we completed $3 million in water and wastewater departments and capital improvement programs last year. We replaced 85 lead and galvanized services, installed 55 new service connections, replaced and converted over 2,900 water meters to real-time reading system, and removed 23 footing drains and prohibited connections from our system. And in the future, we have very high money dollars going into certain bonds, water system bond, plan to replace almost 11 miles of water main and 90 lead-galvanized services in the regional water system. And I think that it goes to show our dedication to completely stay ahead to build this infrastructure so it'll last longer, and we're investing the monies that we receive from the user-based fees, putting it back into the system to improve it for the end user, who's our public and us. Public facilities projects. We put in for, and we wrote, and we are awarded a $7.8 million grant for the ALCC project that'll house the Navar Library, MCOPE, and the Learning Bank, as well as community center campus improvements. We are currently awaiting word on another $2 million grant, community center grant that was actually applied for by MCOPE that we supported. We were also awarded a grant through SEMCOG for conversion of 1,100 streetlights to LEDs, which will be completed in 2024. Communications, Goal C. Communications, we were asked by council to reach all residents using all media alternatives, websites, social media, cable, newspaper, television, radio, newsletter, and door-to-door. We've made very big strides in our communications, using, with the expertise of the communication director, and we've done a really good job of being able to bring real information to our public via all the media possible. Our public safety department combined their police and fire media accounts and expanded to Facebook, X, which formerly Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, and Ring Neighborhood. We successfully rolled out the new refuse contract in June of 2023 and service revisions that just occurred in January 2024, and those were successful in getting the information out to our residents. I think some of you are really happy that we finally launched the My Monroe E newsletter in November of 2023, and I think that I've received a lot of compliments from members of our public who appreciate getting that correspondence twice monthly, and I think that there's a lot of useful information that gets to our public through that means. And we have a memorandum of understanding with impact for video production services for social media and government channel education and promotional use. Second part of that goal was develop strategy for communicating community information to new residents, businesses, and visitors. We've come up with a whole bunch of different things. We have a business emergency contact form that's on our website for our businesses to use in order to register. It's voluntary. They can register a business, give us the information. I would ask every business to use it because it is good for our public safety, as well as all of our other departments to have current updated information for our businesses in case we ever have to get ahold of you off hours or in a case of emergency. Obviously, again, it was the launch of the My Monroe Newsletter. We are currently considering and researching collaboration with local realtors so that we can establish content and think of different things we can give to new residents that move in, that to, you know, whether it's digitally or some other kind of a welcome package that we can deliver to our new residents that give them the information they need as they get started in our city. We have enhanced the use of QR code technology. We use, and quite honestly, we've seen large growth in our engagement on all social media platforms, and we're just getting started. I think that further expansion is going to continue through this next year for sure. Brand implementation, this was important as we changed our brand implementation, and it's important to build our pride in being from the city of Monroe and being in the city of Monroe, and it's important that we present that to our public and show that we are proud to be here, and we've continued our branding. There's going to be in our, we developed an implementation of a signage master plan, beginning with Ten Park, park sign replacements, and three gateway monument signs that'll be installed this fiscal year. We have different wayfinding projects that we are going to do within City Hall that helps the guests that come here find their way around and be able to know where they got to go in order to get here to the department they need. As you saw, the water tower was rebranded in 2022, and we've bought a lot of swag for us to hand out from our different departments to people at events, et cetera, all embossed with our city logo and our brand. Also in communications, you wanted continued developing emergency information programming. Well, I'm happy to say, and it was just recent, both of our communications staff received Public Information Officer certification, I think was about a week and a half ago. They went to the class, they got certified, and I think that's very, very beneficial that they understand that stuff. A lot of times, the Public Information Office is usually utilized by public safety when there's an emergency or there's something important that has to be related to the public in a timely manner, and I think having that with already their skill with developing the communications that come out from the city, I think is going to really enhance our stuff. We also have the internal emergency staff communication system, email, text, phone, call, it's been established. And another part of your goal was to engage impact regarding future direction, how they expand its mission. Well, we have just signed that new lease for them to be on our third floor, and that's already begun to coordinate, and actually, we're currently in the part where we are going to, coordinating a move-in date. Quality of life, probably some of our most important work, because it's the quality of life, not just that we hold ourselves and our own personal view, and what's important is what our residents feel. And that's where the feedback that you receive as being the representatives of our public and what we receive as the administration from our public is vital. One of your goals was reactivating the Arts and Culture Committee. However, after reviewing everything, we did a public out, we wrote, and we brought before you a public art ordinance that was adopted with review procedures to involve the Citizens Planning Commission. Expand upon existing community volunteer projects. We established a tree advisory commission to work in partnership with our city forestry, and we are currently in the process of completely revamping the stewardship Monroe Volunteer Program. Parks and Trail Development, Quality of Life. Park and Trail Master Plan was updated and adopted in 2023. The city received $900,000 from the DNR Spark Grant with SEMCOG and the City Trail Advisory Commission's support with the implementation in 2024. The construction of Carnes Park was completed in late fall. The ribbon cutting is being scheduled for April of 2024. The ribbon cutting is being scheduled for April of 2024. St. Mary's Park and parking lot improvements set to commence in early spring 2024 for 2025 construction. Quality of Life, expand the number of community special events and implement a communication Excuse me. We increased park event sponsorships by 400% in 2023. We started our Finally Friday Summer Concert Series, hosted movie nights both at the National Battlefield and at the Opportunity Center in Labor Park. And the city facilitated these events by marketing on the city's social media channels, website, and newsletter with the branded graphics. We expanded the, I think we all saw, the expansion of the hometown holiday light sponsoring program as we received over 43.5,000 in support from local businesses and corporations for this wonderful event, and the tree lighting promotions by these wonderful donors resulted in over 5,000 people in attendance at our tree lighting event this year, which was amazing. Update all city events in Michigan Cornerstone website and post all countywide events on the city website. That was, that was a goal that was set forth. Well, times change, and the MI Cornerstone GIS event application appears to be out of service and is no longer updated. So the city facilitates the events posted to the website, as well as those that have taken out an application with the city for the use of our parks, services, et cetera. Uses of, this was an important one because it talks, it goes to efficiency, and it goes to the technology that we have, and it goes to expertise and investing in the expertise of people who can bring us to the next level. Use of information technology to improve customer experience, workflow processing, and electronic data collection for operational decision-making. Very important goal. We've, we developed and implementing a camera installation plan for safety monitoring purposes, monitoring traffic and parking flow, and showcasing public events. We've, so far, we have eight of the 10 cameras already installed in the downtown area, which was Phase 1, and as we look at Phase 2 and other opportunities that are coming our way, we will be revamping Phase 2, and we will be discussing what's in the best needs of our city for, for the additional cameras for our parks, et cetera. Technology increases very quickly, and what we would have bought two years ago would be obsolete, and we want to make sure that we have the best operational cameras and functioning for the right reasons and for the ability to actually monitor and use them for the purposes they're designed. Develop an organization-wide, comprehensive weekly and monthly reporting systems and includes operational and project narratives, as well as key performance indicators. Very important goal from the council to us. As you're aware, we maintain a water and wastewater department performance metrics for use in optimizing efficiency and operations of forecasting. You all receive the reports. It is available, they are available on our, on our website. We developed the Director-City Manager Bi-Weekly Update, or I usually call it the Off-Council Week Update, that all of my directors participate in, and they update us on the important things, and then that gets forward through this workflow program to you from me. We began implementation of the individual department performance metric system to result in data-driven monthly report, and this will be, this continued development will continue throughout 2024. Again, the information and technology, Laserfish, we use it as a common term, not a lot of people understand what it is, but it's a software program. This is a software program that I think has revolutionized so many of our processes here and so many of the things that we offer to the public. It's been amazing, and I'm not working for Laserfish. I'm just telling you how good it's been for us. We, 80 Laserfish forms, workflow processes were developed in total to date. 55 of them are available to the public and 25 of them internal, encompassing every department in our city. We have a public portal using Laserfish that was implemented, that puts our meeting documents that, on the internet for, for the public to view. The engineering utility documents for GIS mapping, the FOIA documents, the blight-tracking documents are all online for our citizens to use, and we continue project expansion in 2024. The big information technology thing that's been very beneficial to us is our GIS programming and mapping. We've expanded this for, for, for infrastructure and for informational and management purposes. Talking too fast, I can't turn, I keep my, keep ticking the right buttons here. It's kind of impressive when you look at the numbers. We've recreated the internal and public map viewer. There's 32 additional GIS maps that have been developed for our use, 100-plus additional GIS map layers that have been developed, 15 GIS applications developed for public use, 24 dashboards developed to date, and, and just a perfect example of all these is all the grave sites mapped within the Woodland Cemetery in 2023. The public viewer was developed, and now we're going to actually start implementing gravestone pictures in 2024. I know there may not be a lot of residents that know this, but all of the city trees are GIS mapped. You can go on our city website, you can look, and you can see what kind of tree it is. It's across your street or in your yard or in your, in your easement, and I think, you know, that's where the people who are a lot smarter than me did something because I have no idea how they drove through the city and were able to figure out all of those trees. But it's amazing. Another organizational, last, last goal here was the organizational development and expertise and experience. Implementation of public safety reorganization. In 20, the end of 2021, we hired Director Tolstad as our, as our Director of Public Safety. In the short time that he's been there, we've been able to combine Police and Fire Administrative Office up to our third street, or up to our third floor, so it's all in-house here and daily interaction with the rest of the administration. The Police Command restructure was in July, got done just July, this, the 23rd. They have a, have the cadet program for entry-level staff, which has proven successful because I believe we actually have people that started in our cadet program that are actually in the police academy today. We've expanded our recruitment initiatives, but what's most importantly, to get all this done, and probably some of the heaviest lifting that had to be done to accomplish all these things, is we established multiple memorandums of understanding with the three public safety bargaining units to ensure reorganization is clearly articulated and aligned with collective bargaining agreements. And I have to thank all of those bargaining agreements for their assistance in working with us as the administration as we put those things together because they are able to see how it benefited the organization, it benefited our service level to the public, as well as the functionality and efficiency of the job that they do. We were asked, in the last goals, customer experience, training, and development. There's been a ton of changes in our training and development, and I, and I credit Dr. Everly, who brought with her so many levels of experience, and she has been undeterred in her ideals of how we create a better work environment for our employees, how we increase the education and proficiency of our employees, and how we create an environment for our employees to function the best. We've customized department coaching and process planning. We all went through First Amendment audit training. We developed routines across levels of the organization to promote sharing and expectations and strong communication. There has been multi-department hiring panels that we have now used to, that, that bring in people from different departments when we have a hiring, a hiring in a particular department, so we have the, the input of different areas other than just the area that it's hiring. And we've established processes that is inclusive, inclusive of our collective bargaining units, resulting in better services to the public. They have buy-in. We listen to what they want, we listen to how they feel, and sometimes they have the best ideas of how we reach our goals, and it's, and it's, we do everything possible never to have an adversarial relationship with our collective bargaining units. Develop ongoing training programs for frontline supervisory personnel. We've done that. We have first-line supervisor orientation and training guides and development in our police and fire. We have advanced supervisory development, again, with police and fire at the Eastern Michigan School of Staff and Command. We have leadership coaching sessions. We have in-service training and work sessions. We send people to the ICMA Leadership Academy. We have licensing mentorship program established in our water and wastewater departments, which you have to understand, there takes, there is serious licenses that need to be held by our employees in order to do some of the functions that we have to run our water and wastewater departments. And now we have mentorship programs that those that are senior are now mentoring earlier and starting to bring these people up so that when it comes time to take licensing exams, it becomes, it comes easier, and they know that they're not, that they're supported by their, their bosses, their peers, and everybody else that works there. And we have worked really hard with our departmental reorganizations with multi-level succession planning pathways. It's very, very important that we create efficiencies, but at the same time, to our employees, we have to promote opportunity. They have to see that there is a pathway for their growth and for their, their ascension up through what they desire in their municipal employment. In-service training programs, we've, we've, we've done Active Shooter, we've updated onboard orientation with expanded policy education. We have staff attendance at MiOSHA trainings. We have public, new public access, physical protection in our physical design for, for safety with our, with our city hall. And the Know Before You, Know Before, which is a cybersecurity training for all staff in city with anybody that has technology accounts. And I think most important we saw is, is we, we launched it here in '23, is the Annual Employee Wellness Showcase that we had, where we had employees as well as retirees eligible to come up there. They met with the people who are the providers of their programs, and it was a very well-received event. So as you can see, a lot of information. I worked really hard not to read right from, from the, from the slides, but there's so many things that are important, and how do you eliminate certain things and not eliminate certain things? But I'll tell you the one thing that's the most important that comes from that, comes, comes from this presentation. This is a great city. It was your guidance and your vision and the councils that were here before that led to what those goals and objectives were from '22 and '23. And I think that goes to me, as the city manager for, for the seven months and for the future, I understand how important those goals and objectives are because I can see by all the things that I went over today that this administration, the administration before I was here, our directors, our employees, and our staff did everything they needed to do, to do, to follow your guidance and reach your expectation of service to our public. And I think that it's never been lost on our council, the value of what our public wants and deserve and desire in this city. And I think that when, if you were to put us up against other cities, I think the vision of the council and the dedication and expertise to this staff, it makes this city what this city is. And I think that we're only going to continue forward with this term of the council as we go forward to develop the goals and objectives for the next two years. And I don't know, I'm not the most exciting presenter in the world, but I have exciting, excitement, and passion when I read through the things that, you know, 75% of it was done before I was here. These hardworking people that I am lucky to work with, work for, and that worked for me, and I think that it goes a lot to show the professionalism of this city that wasn't done in a week, wasn't done in a year, and it probably wasn't done in a decade. It's been the people who have stood up, the public that has volunteered to assist us on our boards and commissions, it's the public that, that go and they run for our office to serve us as council people. That is what makes us special, and it's, you know, before I became the city manager here, I was just a resident. I didn't know, I just assumed that the public services are just awesome, that's just how it happens. I didn't know until I got here that it's the dedicated work of our people and it's the dedication of our citizens, it's the dedication of our council that makes it happen. And that's why I'm, I'm proud to be here, and I know this is the first time that you've had a state-of-the-city address from, from a city manager, and I'll be open to your criticisms and critiques later so that next year I can plan differently, but this is the best shot I had, and I hope if anybody from the community, if they have questions or comments on anything that was presented today, it'll be up on the, on our website tomorrow. Please feel free to call my office if they have questions or need more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, there's, there's so much information there, and at the same time, I know, just as you stated, through the clerk's office, that'll be made available as we put it out for the public to review. There may be things that they have followed, they can obviously contact the administration if they have questions about that or things moving forward. It wasn't lost on me when you went through the goals and objectives and how important that is, and as all our council knows, our goals and objectives session is coming up as we prepare for the next two years. There's some things that were covered that are clearly being still finalized and yet are important to the council for meeting our expectations, but on Saturday, February 24th, New York City Hall at 8:30 in the morning, we'll be starting our next goals and objectives session. We have a facilitator, and we're really looking in a broad sense. We've talked about topics that are already important. We had an economic development session on a Saturday at least a couple, three weeks ago, and we'll continue to have those type of sessions as well. So, thank you again, Manager Robinson, for the presentation. Clerk, next item, please.
The next, the next item is under Council Action. It's Item 4473, Proposed Ordinance 24-001 to Establish Park Regulations is up for its first reading, and recommendation the second reading and public hearing be set.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, any comments?
Yes, sir. At the December 4th, 2023 meeting, we adopted a resolution approving the comprehensive update to the park rules and regulations. However, the update regulation did not put forth a pathway or procedure for if a person is found to be in violation of the park, park rules. So to address this issue, we're bringing forth this new ordinance to be brought before City Council for consideration. It describes the role of the City Council in reviewing approving park regulations, as well as naming people that violate our park rules and regulations, they would be responsible for a municipal civil infraction, and the penalty would be consistent with the violations of the other local ordinances in Monroe. And so it's recommended that the City Council approves this first reading of Ordinance 24-001 establishing Chapter 43 Park Regulations of the Code of the City of Monroe, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for the adoption on Monday, March 4th, 2024, at 7:30.
Thank you. Any questions from council? If not, looking for a motion. Councilman Lamore?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 24-001 to Establish Chapter 483 Park Regulations of the Code of the City of Monroe. Schedule a public hearing, second reading for adoption on March 4th, 2024, at 7:30 p.m.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, spurred by Councilman Stillgrave on Item 4473, the establish of the public hearing for the proposed ordinance 24-001. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
The first reading, Ordinance 24-001, Chapter 483 Park Regulations, and ordinance to establish Chapter 483 Park Regulations of the Code of the City of Monroe. The next item is Item 4467, Authorization to Submit a Grant Application to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Housing Readiness Incentive Grant.
Manager Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor and Council, I would like to actually, this item and the three items that are, this item and the two items that are following it, I know that Director Cochran items that are, this item and the two items that are following it, I know that Director Cochran has some other information on each of those items that he would like to bring forth to you and how they relate to our housing strategy and some of the infill things and some of the things through economic development that I covered in my State of the Union.
Thank you. Director Cochran.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development. So recently, within the past month, MISHDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Agency, sent out a notice that they were awarding communities up to $50,000 to do work on their zoning code and master plans to prepare for housing development to respond to the housing crisis that not only our region, but the state and the nation are also facing. These funds, like I said, it's up to $50,000 per community. There's no match requirement. And they're giving it away on a first-come, first-served basis. So the sooner you get your application in, the sooner hopefully you can get the money. And they will give it out until all the funds are depleted. But what we're looking at, certainly a lot of work went into the zoning code update when we did a master overhaul back in 2020. But what we would seek to do with these funds are to update the zoning code and look at all the different residential districts, to look at things like the minimum lot size that's required. Right now, we've got a minimum square footage for a new or a residential structure in the city. Things like density and encouraging more dense residential development, reviewing parking requirements in the format of housing that's permitted in the city. This is very much in line with implementing the Orchard East Neighborhood Subarea Plan that did have quite a few consistent recommendations to improve the zoning code to allow for different formats of housing that meet the needs of our residents and future residents. So this $50,000 would allow us to actually do the work to bring a revised zoning code before the planning commission and city council.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Let's make a comment. I noticed we listen around from Southeast Michigan and across the state of Michigan, housing is the number-one topic. And what's one thing we're learning, we have to be more flexible within our zoning. And that's what this opportunity presents itself. And we all know that we have to have some foundation of what we're doing, but today's market is different than it was 10 years ago. And it'll probably be different 10 years from now. But at the word of the day, so to speak, in housing and how we build and how we make accommodations, it's flexibility. Still have to have some standards, but I think this will give us an opportunity to put things in place that may not currently be here, that hopefully will bring future developments specifically in the housing area. So with that, if there's not any questions, a motion would be in order.
I'd like...
Councilman Hader.
I'd like to make a question.
No, wait. You have a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
We'll start for a second.
I noticed that from the city manager's state-of-the-city address, he mentioned that we're, that we have a pending housing plan that we're going to hear back from in March. How is this going to impact what's going on with that?
Yep. So we did have a sneak peek. We met with Beckett and Rader, who's working on the residential housing strategy for us right now. We are tentatively planning March 18th for that presentation before council and your work session on that final report. And I know there's also going to be recommendations that are included in that residential housing strategy. And so we would fold those in and at the same time, do one comprehensive update.
But this, this isn't going to be ready at that point in time, I don't expect.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now, we're just submitting the application. We hope to hear within the next 60 days or so that we would get the funds.
Very good.
Very good. Councilman Hader?
I make a motion to grant authorization for the Economic and Community Development Department to submit the MSHDA Housing Readiness Incentive Grant application.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 4467, Authorization to Submit the Grant Application to MISHDA as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 4466, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate for 49 South Monroe Street.
I'm looking at Manager Robinson, but I think Mr. Cochran is going to come back.
Again, this is, this is something I think is important that I know that Director Cochran would like to discuss because it falls right in line with some of the things that we are learning and some of the things that we have to be prepared for when we're looking at developing housing within the city.
Yep, certainly. So as City Manager Robinson presented in his state-of-the-city address, your council goals had quite a bit to do with residential housing, but they also talked about downtown redevelopment. Late last year, we, or yeah, late last year, we received an application from 101 West Front Street LLC, and I'll note the applicant is in the audience tonight in case you have any questions, but seeking an obsolete property rehab abatement certificate, which would provide for a tax abatement for a requested term of 12 years for an investment of $455,229 to convert the fourth floor of this building. So the existing first floor is commercial. The second and third floor right now are four apartments on each, so eight apartments in that building. The fourth floor was never finished when it was added onto the building, and the applicant is proposing to finish out that building by adding four two-story apartments on, into this building. It's about 2,900 square feet, so each unit would be about 850 square feet with rents between $800 to $890 a month. And so considering this abatement, it did go before the city's Economic Development Review Committee, who reviewed the application and made a recommendation to city council to award the application for the full 12 years. I'll note, too, that completion is expected this summer. So he's wasting no time in getting to work once council, if you approve the certificate this evening. And one of the things, too, that I wanted to remind city council that we've talked about, my department hasn't instituted a new reporting requirement for any tax abatement that we may award, and that would include quarterly reporting to the city to make sure that the applicant is staying on target and making the investment, or meeting the investment targets that were committed to the city in consideration for a tax abatement. So that's an overview of the project, but certainly open if you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cochran on this request? Not? Councilman Lamore?
Yes. Your Honor, I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution approving the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 49 South Monroe Street for a period of 12 years.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 4466, the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 49 South Monroe Street. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Before we go to the next more item here, I just want to thank Mr. Wickenheiser for his investment in our downtown. It's not that he just showed up today. He's been here many, many years, and many great work. We know with the work that he does, and we know the success that he's had, but also the success that he's had for the downtown, which continues to grow. And kind of, this, this is the example, as Mr. Cochran said, of how we have to look at things and how we have to be flexible, but also know what the outcomes are going to be. And I think, so I just want to say thank you for being here this evening, but also for all the great work. Look forward to seeing you again. Thanks, Ken. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, again, Your Honor and council, that this is, again, to approve the PUD agreement between the City of Monroe and Infinity Homes for the Mason Run 2.0 and pattern book, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. And I know that Director Cochran wanted to also make some comments in reference to the same conversation type that we were talking about when it comes to housing.
In keeping with the theme of this evening, another residential housing agreement coming before city council. So you'll recall, late last year, you approved new PUD design standards related to Mason Run 2.0. So the city has been engaged with positive and productive conversations with Infinity Homes, a Michigan home builder who is proposing to not only finish the Mason Run infill development north of Noble in the next phase of Mason Run, but also extend that up into the vacant lots that are around the extension of Lorraine in North. The existing infill development lots are being proposed to be built in accordance with the existing Mason Run PUD agreement. And I'm pleased to say that last week, the developer submitted the elevations that we're reviewing to start construction on those single-family housing development in Mason Run. This particular agreement is about the new homes that are not part of the Mason Run 1. So 2.0 is, it's going to be about 30 new homes north of Lorraine Street. These are going to be a little bit different in format than the existing Mason Run development. You already reviewed the site plan and the design standards and the PUD plan that went along with this. But to go along with every PUD, we also have to have an agreement between the city and the developer. And so the agreement tonight pretty much lays out all the standard terms. The developer is responsible for installation and maintenance of all infrastructure, including roads, water, sewer, and all infrastructure that's necessary for the development of the project, lays out maintenance requirements and things of that sort, but really says that all development will be done in accordance with that PUD 2.0 that you approved late last year. So we're excited to be moving Mason Run forward finally, after about 20 years of it remaining vacant. And so we're excited. Also, you know, I think this is a testament to the many housing needs of the city. We just talked about the format downtown. That's about 800 square feet. Certainly, these are about 2,000 square feet and more marketed between $250,000 and $290,000 each. So certainly space for a lot of different formats, a lot of different residential housing development that meets a variety of needs. And however, pleased to move this one forward with, if you're in agreement this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the PUD agreement between the City of Monroe and Infinity Homes for the Mason Run 2.0 PUD amendment and pattern book, and authorize the mayor and clerk treasurer to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, of city council.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Lamore on item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Before we go to the next more item here, I just want to thank Mr. Wickenheiser for his investment in our downtown. It's not that he just showed up today. He's been here many, many years, and many great work. We know with the work that he does, and we know the success that he's had, but also the success that he's had for the downtown, which continues to grow. And it kind of, this, this is the example, as Mr. Cochran said, of how we have to look at things and how we have to be flexible, but also know what the outcomes are going to be. And I think, so I just want to say thank you for being here this evening, but also for all the great work. Look forward to seeing you again. Thanks, Ken. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes. Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, again, Your Honor and council, that this is, again, to approve the PUD agreement between the City of Monroe and Infinity Homes for the Mason Run 2.0 and pattern book, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, of city council.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Lamore on item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Before we go to the next more item here, I just want to thank Mr. Wickenheiser for his investment in our downtown. It's not that he just showed up today. He's been here many, many years, and many great work. We know with the work that he does, and we know the success that he's had, but also the success that he's had for the downtown, which continues to grow. And it kind of, this, this is the example, as Mr. Cochran said, of how we have to look at things and how we have to be flexible, but also know what the outcomes are going to be. And I think, so I just want to say thank you for being here this evening, but also for all the great work. Look forward to seeing you again. Thanks, Ken. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, again, Your Honor and council, that this is, again, to approve the PUD agreement between the City of Monroe and Infinity Homes for the Mason Run 2.0 and pattern book, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, of city council.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Lamore on item 4471, Proposed Mason Run 2.0 PUD Agreement with Infinity Homes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 4453, Authorization to Hire a Grant Rider for the rescue boat for the MPSD.
Thank you. I know we had a presentation during our work session. Manager Robinson?
Your Honor, as we all sat through this presentation, I think it was very, a very good presentation done by our Public Safety Director along with our director Lamar from the port. I do believe that there's a need. I do believe with the port expansions and the different possibilities of things that could happen in that area near and around the port, to have a public safety and, a complete public safety, police and fire asset that would not only be good to us and for our city, for our residents in our area, but also for the safety of people that are in our area and us be able to respond to assistance with, with our mutual aid responsibilities. I think none of this happens unless we, we find out more and we authorize and we have that, that grant written for by, by an expert maritime grant-writing specialist. It's not like the specialist fell out of the sky. They've used this specialist before at the port and been successful. And I do believe that our port director has the, the connections for us to be able to lobby for the, our match for this grant. And none of it will, won't find out if we're going to get this boat and basically not cost us anything but the upkeep after the fact. I think that it's important that we get the ball rolling on this and authorize the, the funding in order to hire the grant writer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council for the manager? Councilman Lamore?
Just to make a motion, Your Honor, to authorize the administration to hire a grant writer from Torrey Enterprises for a rescue boat for the Monroe Public Safety Department in the amount not to exceed $9,500, and to authorize a budget amendment by transferring funding from the general fund contingency.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 4453, Authorization to Hire a Grant Writer from a Rescue Boat for Monroe Public Safety Department. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 4470, Approval of Construction Design Agreement for ALCC and Navar Library Expansion Project.
Thank you. Councilman, I'm sorry. Manager Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor and council, we are looking to ask for, for you to approve the amendment to the original schematic design contract with Kohler Architects for their services related to the construction, design, and building of the contract, and to oversee the ALCC Navar Library for the additional sum of $613,000, authorizing myself to, to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. And we have Director Cochran, who'll be willing to answer any questions, should you have any regarding this request.
Thank you. Any questions for administration or Mr. Cochran regarding this item? Councilman Felder?
This is an amendment to an existing design order that we have outstanding with this firm on this project. What was the initial design amount that we had?
Director Cochran will have that.
Yep. For the schematic design, it was $66,000, and that portion of the project has been completed.
Was it always seen as a multi-phase project?
Yeah. So the first schematic design is really coming up with the programmatic needs for all the users. And the next phase is actually developing the construction documents to put it out to bid.
Okay.
It's important to note that this is actually being funded out of the grant. So this wouldn't be paid for out of the general fund or the city's funds. This is coming out of the grant, which was expected and submitted as part of the application.
The questions for administration or Mr. Cochran? Councilwoman Vining?
I was just looking at a line item in the draft budget that they sent for air conditioning
Also, I had to make myself notes, so I remembered everything here. And there's another thing that I'm involved in that's this Friday night, and it's called Night to Shine. And that is for special needs, people from 14 years and older. It'll be held at the Monroe County Community College. It's a Tim Tebow Foundation, and these kids love this. It's a prom for them. They, the parents, the caregivers and everything are getting a night to themselves and getting fed and pampered and everything else. So it's a pretty exciting thing. So the public is welcome to come. It is free, although you might be put to work. So I just want to thank everybody for everything that they do here, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
I have no comments this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilwoman Jermaine.
As usual, I can't say enough good things about our port and the leadership there and the future vision with that this vote will provide, if we get the grant, and hopefully will, that it's going to have for our city and the region as well. And I also want to thank the city manager. I've always wondered why we never had a State of the City address. You heard the county, every year, they do their Where's the City? So thank you so much for that, and you did a great job. I appreciate you as well. Thank you.
You. Councilwoman Lamore.
No comment, Your Honor.
Councilwoman.
No comment, Your Honor.
Felder. No comment. Councilman Hader.
Why, I do like, thank Executive Robinson for his presentation, and kind of along with what Deb was saying, it was the positive things that I've seen go on in the city that made me want to sit on this council, too. So appreciate the job and the leadership that we have here. And do want to remind everybody again to take care, or take advantage of the Black History Month Blue Series that's going on right now at our county library system. And that's it.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of comments. First, I want to thank city manager for State of the City. I think just seeing all the goals, objectives, the work that's been done and some of the accomplishments, it's been a very progressive two years. Obviously, as always, there's still things to be done and improvements to be made, as I mentioned about the Goals and Objectives session coming forward and how we plan for the next two years, and continue to move forward at the pace in which we are and maybe even more. So the next, I appreciate Councilman Hader, I agree that with Black History Month here, there's many opportunities to be engaged, learn, and be a better understanding, but also, as we live here in Monroe, but in your lives throughout, you know, the opportunity, the center at ALCC, there's information and items there, as well as the Monroe County Library System that was mentioned by Councilman Hader. But the Monroe County Community College also has sessions and information and programs. So not going to go through the list of all where they are and when they are, but if you would just go to their websites, you will find there is many opportunities, and I hope everybody finds the space in their life and time to go and attend one of the sessions or at least participate in some fashion for all of us. Last is the ALCC Navar Library Project. I want to thank the, all the hard work from the committee past, the committee current, the administration. Many efforts have been put to where we, forward to where we are today, and we've progressed forward with Kohler and now OCH. I think that we saw their success working with them when we had the fire station being built. So I think we're on a path to begin, and I think as we do that, it's, I know we're all have been patiently waiting to get to this point, but now we get the designs, we can start with implementation. So my congratulations that we've got moving forward, and I'll say thank you. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy.
Just a reminder that we're still accepting the absentee applications or your ballot selection form if you're a permanent ballot voter. Taxes are due February 14 without penalty. After that, they'll be accepted, there will be a penalty, and they will be accepted through February 29. So there's an extra day this year before we close the books and prepare for sending them over to the county. So if you don't pay by February 29, you will be unable to pay for a couple of weeks, and we'll keep you posted on all of that. Finally, early voting, which is new to the state of Michigan, will begin before our next meeting. So just a reminder that that will be February 17 through February 25. If you have your absentee ballot during that time period, if you haven't already turned it in, you would be able to place that in the tabulator and those early voting sites, the early voting site in the city of Monroe will be here at city hall, right here in the council chambers, from 8 to 4. And again, that information is available on our website and will continue to be enhanced to continue to get the message out. That's all I have.
Thank you. One item that was in one of our earlier sessions with the election commission's review was the accuracy testing that's coming on Monday, and I'm going to ask Clerk Lavoy just to review that, because that is open to the public. It'll be here, but just put that out as well, because I know some people are interested in that and have attended in the past.
I appreciate that reminder. Yes, the public accuracy test is the way that we test not just the hardware itself, the tabulator itself, but we also test the programming. So we, at the clerk's office, go through an intense period where we test every ballot, we test every tabulator. We had to run 66 ballots through each tabulator, and then the early voting tabulator will actually have more than that, because it has to be able to accept all of the precincts. So we'll do that, and then there's one more test. The, in the city of Monroe, the election commission happens to be council, is directed by charter. It's state mandated that we conduct these public accuracy tests, and they will at random choose a, excuse me, they will choose a tabulator for us to test. We don't prompt them, and they don't give us a heads up. So we have no idea that day what they're going to request to be tested. They run all of the test deck ballots again through the tabulator. So again, it's a double check, and the results need to match the test deck that has been developed. And then this, the component that records the votes, the cards, those are sealed in the tabulator. They double check the seal, that it's the same number that we put on it when we did the pre-testing. And that seal will be again checked on election day by the election inspectors. If that seal number changes, then everything would stop and we would figure out what was wrong. So it's just all part of the checks and balances, and it is an open meeting of the election commission. It's going to be Monday at 8 o'clock, so February 12, 8:00 a.m., right here in council chambers. And anyone is welcome to attend and encouraged to attend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City manager Robinson, comments?
Well, being that I think I used my allotment of words and oxygen today, but I would want to finally just thank my directors and my staff, because they were very vital in putting together the information that I presented to you tonight and how much I appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is citizens' comments. If there's those present who wish to have comments, I'd ask that you just move forward to the podium, state your name, residence or jurisdiction of residence. Be mindful of the rules of the chamber, you have three minutes, and I'll start now to see if there's any comments from those present here this evening. Any comments from those present? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Kimberly Searle. I own Integrative Sustainable Movement. I'm a yoga therapist and have been a therapeutic movement professional in your community for 16 years now. On 1/26, we arrived to work and made it to the back of my business, and it was an instant headache of gas smell that alerted me to an issue, right? We don't want to have a gas smell. So I immediately called Michigan Gas to report a gas emergency. I believe Brian Lamar, his building, also had a gas emergency, and he called fire department and police. Our fire and police were amazing. They should be congratulated for, you know, taking care of that emergency quickly. They were able to find a shut-off valve, because our block did have a strong gas smell to it. When Michigan Gas, they were at a completely different place. They were on West Front Street versus East, but our police went down and redirected them. So they came in with their monitors to make sure that our building was safe to work in after we aired it out, so on and so forth. Michigan Gas did say that we were lucky that our fire department could find a shut-off valve. The river had overflowed its banks, as it normally does in the spring, unusual for January, though, and there was ice piling up on the river walk. It was probably about as tall as me, so let's say somewhere between four and five feet. It was stacked up, and the river had overflowed. Nobody wants anybody washed down the river, so we knew that it wouldn't be fixed until the river came into its banks. I talked to Michigan Gas again on Tuesday. I tried to work in my business. On Monday, with space heaters, it just could not do the job. It didn't get above 56 degrees. So that meant that I needed to cancel my business. On Tuesday, I talked to Michigan Gas to see when would they, you know, be able to fix the problem. I needed to manage expectations, not only for myself, but also for my clientele. So I, he gave me that information that if it had broke above ground 24 hours once they had access, if it had jarred what was above ground and cracked the pipe underneath the ground, now we would be digging up the river walk, we would need to reroute lines, maybe to street level. No expectation of when we would have heat to work if that happened. So I left it be on Wednesday. On Thursday, our nicest day to do some work to move the ice. The river had receded with inside its riverbanks. From my view of my business, it looked like it was down maybe 12 inches within its banks. So great, we could do something. I had talked to Michigan Gas when they were worried about the stacked of ice. On Tuesday, I had suggested that they work with the city to see if there could be a partnership for this utility emergency to have the ice moved. When I came down here around 10:30, 11:00 o'clock, there was no activity from the city or from Michigan Gas. So I ran down to Brian's business, Mr. Lamar's business, and said, hey, what are the suggestions? And I was quite surprised that he had heat and I didn't have heat. So that made me a little feisty. And he suggested that I contact the city manager. It was my first time to talk to David Robinson, and he took my assertive language on the chin, and he immediately got busy with his department. And I'm happy to say that he met my requests expediently. Had I not made that call, though, I would be standing here without heat. After he, Dave Robinson, turned it around very quickly, met my timeline for my needs, then I got back with Michigan Gas. After several loopholes through there, we finally had eight Michigan Gas people working in our building, and heat was restored by 5:00 p.m. on Friday. I'm here with the intention that the conversation should not stop. We need to talk about this further, because I would still be without heat for another week, maybe two, three weeks. That's a commerce problem, right? I have, I'm in a four-story commercial building with several tenants. To me, it's kind of unacceptable, once the river has recided, to not work together to resolve the issue quickly. I'm told that those lines probably do need to move up to street level, which is going to be a whole nother conversation of where does that expense come from? Does it come from Michigan Gas? Is it coming from city? Is it going to come back onto the landlords? How is that going to be resolved? And will we be out of business for a while while that's happening, or will it be done during warmer months, when maybe we just are going to go without hot water? And how long will that be? I'm sure you have an emergency response plan. Does it stop once the emergency valve's been shut off? Mr. Robinson was on vacation. On Monday, his department heads shouldn't have walked into his office and said there was a utility emergency so that he knew? Because as the business owner, I'm thinking he had 72 hours to put a plan together for Thursday. So these are the questions that I want you to ponder. I hope that people continue to have conversations with me about how that works. You know, I was quite disappointed to see that there wasn't any sense of urgency until I got assertive language and had to say, either we can work with the city, or I'm going to go out as a, as a business owner and have to move the ice on myself. I know Brian Lamar moved his own ice. Is that really what we want? So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, because I think if I wouldn't have said anything, you probably wouldn't have known the obstacles that I faced that week. I spent 15 to 20 hours working through bureaucracy to get heat in my business by Friday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Kim. So I, I'll just, looking at Mr. Robinson, because we had, you know, chatted about this, not this particular incident, it was in the past when we talked about our critical response review. There is a plan, but talking about how we revisit that, and this just gives the example of the importance of reviewing it, not just for the time in which it's the emergency, but what do you do afterwards, or what do you do for the future? So actually, it was a conversation we've had prior to this, and it was a conversation in a meeting that we were in this morning, in a general sense, about the critical response or response to critical incidents. So thank you for your comments, and I know that there'll be follow-up administratively. I know that the public safety, both police and fire, as well as others, will be engaged. And I think part of that is the communication, how when we move forward with this, the communications department to make sure we're getting to the public what the outcomes will be. So thank you for your comment. Other comments from those here present this evening? Other comments? Seeing none. Motion adjourned. So motion, Councilwoman Lamore to adjourn, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine. Clerk, please call a rule.
Councilperson Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Hader.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening.